In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on February 9, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can I have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Haley? Mr. Kent?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here. All right, and we're here early to go into executive session, so I'll read that motion. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act of Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975 provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset in the State of New Jersey as follows: The following matters to be discussed are student disciplinary matters related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying[65.29][65.29](HIB), the matters discussed in an executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I need a motion to that effect.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Mrs. Haas has arrived, so we can mark that down.
And Mr. Gillette?
And Mr. Gillette? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? We are in executive session. All right, we are back in public session. Can I have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here. All right, I need a motion to adjourn that meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? All right, that meeting is closed, and we're going to move on to our regularly scheduled 7:30 meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on February 9, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we need another roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here. All right, moving on. As you can see, we received many correspondence, thank you very much. We got a lot of feedback on the school calendar, not surprising, and we appreciate the input, and you'll see that we have, I believe, responded to that with our calendar up for proposal -- up for approval tonight. All right, moving on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two presentations tonight. One is our demographic report, as well as how we're expanding social networking within our district. First, Mr. Mahmood, if you wouldn't mind introducing our demographer.
Shirley, thank you, Dr. Schiff. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce our demographer, Mr. Joseph Richardson of Whitehall Associates. Mr. Richardson, would you come up to the podium, please?
All right. What we have here is the opening page. Now, the people up front can see this, but this is the -- this is the decennial population from 1930 down to 2010. You had double-digit growth from 1950, except for between 19 -- between 2000 and 2010. This is your enrollment history. Now, there are two things that we use to make our projections. One is the live births, which we get from the state, and the reason we don't get that from the municipality is that the Center for Disease Control in Atlanta is the one that sets the national standards for recording births, and it's to the domicile of the mother. Now, if Mama is in San Francisco on vacation and goes into labor, but she lives in Hillsborough, that's her domicile, that birth is recorded for Hillsborough, although the kid would have a San Francisco birth certificate. But the birthing facility has the responsibility to report to the state and not to the municipality, so the state figures are what we have to use. The other that you see in here are the enrollments as they are on October 15 of every year. They used to be taken from the superintendent's fall survey report, but that was done away with in 2010, and we've been jumping through hoops getting the correct figures for 2010-11 and 2011-12. People here have been wonderful in working it out and helping us. Now, you'll notice something here. We call this the cohort survival method, and what we do is we track the youngsters that are born, and here they go into kindergarten, and they go to first, second, third, fourth, so on down the line. That is a cohort, and what we want to do is to see how that -- all those cohorts average out from birth to kindergarten for those six years, and we come up with an average survival ratio. In other words, one would mean exactly the same number of kids went from one grade to the next. If it's less than one, then obviously be less kids, and greater than one would be more. And I can't read that up there, but let me get it here. You're showing slightly over one for your average survival ratio. Now, that would indicate growth, but I want to point out something to you. You can't see it here, but the births have dropped significantly from 2005-6 down to the latest -- last one we have are the ones that would be coming in in 2014-15. We see this all over northern New Jersey. Now, next slide, please. Next, please. There we go. Too far. Back up. All right, here we -- again, we track that cohort down, and we make the projections there, and we're going from 72 -- 7251 here down to 6862 here. That's a drop of about 516 youngsters or students, teenagers are not youngsters anymore, at about 7 percent drop. However, in this district, you have a sizable amount of residential development that's going to add in 697 youngsters at grades K through 12. The way we break that out is we take the average in this projection of kindergarteners to the whole and each grade to the whole, so this becomes very, very district-specific. The developments and everything, we got from Mr. Ringelsheim at the municipal office. He was very wonderful in working with us, but we don't know when those developments are going to come online, so we add them in to the last year, and we show that that 697 students will bring the total five years out to 7,559 students, which is a little bit of an increase from what you have now. Okay? The next two slides, you're not going to be able to read, but these are the developments. Go to the next and the last. Now, these developments right here are ones that are pending somewhere in the future, so much so that we have not made projections of how many students they're going to be, but for the sake of completeness, we put them in. Next slide, please. Now, since there's a projected decrease in the normal cohort projections for your district, we add the entire residential development impact in, okay, and which you just saw. All right, the next slide, please. The long-range facility plan requirements are that we have to project by school, by grade, five years out, using the ratio of students that exist this year is on October 15. That's the school year, October 15. So here you have your 759 -- 7,559 students broken out by school, by grade, five years Now, I'm open to any questions. Well, that's a switch.
Do any board members have any questions for our demographer?
Second, please.
I have a question for you.
I cannot hear.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
So, obviously, with all the builders building and the town is slowly growing, what I want to know is what exactly is going on with the town center, with the center of the town? Huh? No?
Well, can I respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
Some of the -- first of all, I want to thank Mr. Richardson for the great work he did at Whitehall Associates on this project. This came to the operations committee several months ago and required at least one major revision and then some scheduling before we can have Mr. Richardson at the meeting, so thank you. To Dana's question, some of the developments detailed in the report are around all different parts of town, but specifically in that town center area, I don't think there's any residential impact from that detailed in the report. The only project, as I recall, that was in that area did not pass the planning board or was withdrawn or something, and that was actually pulled out in one of the revisions from the report, so there's really no impact at all from town center shown in this report. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, Mr. Tla. Any other questions from the board?
I know.
Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, I have a little more. I don't know if it's actually a question, but if I say something incorrect, Mr. Richardson will, I'm sure, correct me. I did want to make a couple of comments about the report. I did take a good, hard look at it, each revision, and also, as a 19-year resident of the town and someone who's seen the town grow over those 19 years, but not as much in the last couple of years. In fact, as is reported in the study, our school enrollment peaked a number of years ago, and it's coming down since then, and we've had a downward trend. But some interesting things about this is that, first of all, the way I look at the report is that the birth rate science behind that is very solid, very predictive, and it's something that we should rely on without question. The impact from development is somewhat less reliable, in my opinion. And it has to do with the way this report is constrained. For long-term facilities, report -- we must report all the possible development that might happen, and it has to be only out to a five-year period. The way I look at it, when I look at these developments, I see some on there that got approval like in 2007, have never seen a shovel, and probably never will, but I also see some that, yes, are sure to come, but I don't think built out to their full extent in five years, maybe more like 10 years, except that we can't put that in this report. It has to show out to five years. So when I look at it, I don't -- I see more, maybe the same enrollment in five years, maybe even a little less from the way I look at it. And lastly, as I think about this report, I see that the driver of any increase in enrollment is driven by new development, new residential development coming in, not by birth rate. Now, if you're going to have any increase at all, the best way to have it is from new residential development, not from birth rate. If we had an increase of a couple hundred or 500 students, if we had the birth rate in the other direction, that would mean, you know, let's say we had 697 by birth rate. That would be 700 more students with no more tax revenue, because they'd all be in the same houses that we have now. This is the best way for the taxpayers out there that are looking at, you know, the Hillsborough Beacon last week and see 697 more students, what's happening? It's not going to have any impact at all, I think, because the impact is coming from new development, which will offset in tax revenue some of that impact, probably all of it, if it's only going to be 180 students at the worst case. So I just wanted to say that to so that people I know -- I had comments from people who've come up to me and saw reporting in the newspaper and started to cry. It's really not that bad. In fact, I think we're about level and will be good for a long time to come.
Thank you. I think that sounds about right.
Yes. Yes, it does.
Yeah, I think the big take-home message is we're not building any more schools and we're not losing any schools. We're sort of just staying status quo, which is just fine.
And I will say this, this is unique. We have done over 300 districts in the school, I mean, in the state. This particular situation where the developments match the laws is absolutely unique.
It's because we're a great place to live.
We're one of the best.
One of the best. Or something. We're doing something right. Any questions from the public regarding the demographer's report? All right, I think that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about the social networking opportunities that we will be providing to our community, actually, starting tomorrow. Kia Bergman is our community outreach coordinator, and she's been with us for a few months and has done a wonderful job putting some of these things together. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kia.
As you can see, I have our district webpage up right now, and there are a few new additions over here on the left-hand side. You can see that you can now like us on Facebook, you can follow us on Twitter. We have the RSS feed, which we've had for a while now, and we're also on YouTube, so if you want to take a look at our Facebook page, you could now like us on Facebook. Basically, we have some information up regarding the district. Our wall shows some photos. As you can see, these are from our most recent newsletter, so we have some photos up there. We can also use Facebook website to announce events, or you can also go on and take a look at our newsletter, and you can also go to our YouTube channel through here as well. On our YouTube channel, we do have the Board of Education meetings, as well as some projects that students at all the schools have been sending my way to post to YouTube. So as you can see, hopefully tomorrow afternoon, I should have up this evening's board meeting for the community to see. Where also, you can follow us on Twitter. We are @hillsboroboe on Twitter. So a lot of our parents these days are using these social media sites on the trains and getting to work, and usually they're on their phones, and Facebook is the first thing they see in the morning and sometimes the last thing they see at night, so these avenues will help, hopefully, give us the opportunity to celebrate the good news of the district as well as provide some informal reminders as to upcoming events, and also hopefully hear what the community has to say. Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
And hopefully, our community will find these tools helpful and informative at this time. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the public regarding the superintendent's report? Or anybody from the board? Dr. Rosenberg?
I just want to say, I think the use of social media in this way is very welcome, as far as I'm concerned. First of all, the YouTube channel will enable anybody, whether they subscribe to Comcast or not, to see the board meetings in their entirety, and it works. Unlike Channel 14, sometimes we've had problems. Anybody can see the board meetings, so this gives the public more options in terms of finding out what's going on at the schools. And as far as Facebook is concerned, not only is it a place for us to post information, but it's a place for us to get feedback from the community. Some of that feedback may be inappropriate at times, but I think it's worth the opportunity to give people another voice to speak to us. So this is all well and good, and I think the district is to be commended for using the technology that people out there in the real world are using. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Haley?
We're sharing mics tonight. This one's broken. Just wanted to say thank you to Kia and Dr. Schiff for helping to bring this to fruition, because I think that this is very important for us to really, you know, keep up with the community. And Dr. Rosenberg stole a little bit of my thunder. It's okay. When it comes to Channel 14, because we do have issues with, especially on the northern part of town, where people are able to sign up for Verizon FiOS now, Channel 14 doesn't work, people with satellite dishes, so that's great. The only question I have is with regard to the inappropriateness, potentially, who is our monitor, basically? Is everything that's posted approved before it's put up on the site, or is it a live feed?
Yeah, it's a very important part. Maybe Ms. Bergman can come to the mic and address that question.
Hi. Yes, I am the moderator of the Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. YouTube, I'm able to see the comments before they are officially put up. Facebook, they are placed automatically, but I do receive notifications that something has been posted, so I can, if inappropriate, if it doesn't relate to the district, or if it's just an off-handed comment, I can remove those when I see those come through. Yes.
Dr. Rosenberg?
I would suggest that give some thought to putting up some guidelines for posting. Not so much that people don't or do or don't know what to post, but if someone posts something inappropriate, they can't say there were no guidelines. So by putting up some guidelines about what we consider appropriate is fine, and I'm sure that appropriateness versus inappropriateness will not be confused with censorship as we want all legitimate comments to be expressed.
Absolutely. We have on our Facebook site, a Facebook site, a tab called Rules of Engagement, which will give some guidelines as to what is inappropriate.
Would you like to be able to read it in front of your parents or something like that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Quick follow-up question for Kia. Kia, just one quick question. As a Facebook user myself, will people be able to post pictures and tag people in the photos?
They will not be able to post pictures to our website nor tag us. Only the administrators in district are able to post on the wall.
Thank you.
Mrs. Haas?
When we discussed this at our education committee meeting, we discussed the issue of advertising on the site. Has that been resolved?
Well, advertising is how Facebook makes their money, so they do run the ads on the right-hand side of the page based on what the user's history on websites is. That can't be removed, however, it is addressed on the Facebook and as well on YouTube, where they do run ads that, you know, we, the district, doesn't endorse any of the advertisers on the right-hand side, and those are all chosen by either Facebook or YouTube.
Okay, so that's clear on the side?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I'd just like to thank you very much for all your work on this. I know this wasn't simple, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say, I appreciate the YouTube option. I know we run this on Channel 14, but I guess you could TiVo it, but with YouTube, I knew it was up there before it went live, and I had some parents I knew had their children present here but weren't able to make it, and so I made a point of letting them know that they could see, you know, they could go to the website and look at the YouTube of their students' presentation, and you can go back and forth and find where in the meeting things are. It's a great option.
It is, and we've also been getting a lot of projects in from the elementary schools up through the high schools that the students have been working on, that they want their parents to be able to see, so it's a wonderful option to have the parents be able to see them on YouTube.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I think we're ready to move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For everything. Moving on to approval of minutes. All right, I need a motion for the January 23, 2012 special public session.
So moved.
Mrs. Haas, how about? And then a second from Mr. Pulsofer, how about that?
That works.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? All right, for the January 23, 2012 regular public session, I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah.
Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, the section of the minutes that talk about our discussion of the calendar did not contain the motion for setting the date at June 20 for graduation. The minutes spoke about some other motion, which I actually did go back on the YouTube channel, because I thought I was reading that, but it turns out there was a roll call vote for June 20, and that should be...
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Mahmood said he will look at the YouTube video and include that in the minutes.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion for January 23 regular public session? All right, so the corrected minutes we're voting on, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions? All right, January 23, 2012 executive session, I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Opposed? And abstentions? All right. We have no committee reports tonight, so we're going to move on to new business. If there's new business from the public at this time, you can approach the mic, and then we'll go to new business to the board next. Name and address, please, but you knew that.
My name is Amy Salinger. I live in Bridgewater, New Jersey, but I'm a teacher here in Hillsboro. Kelly Velano, teacher in Hillsboro and 87 Meadowbrook, Hillsboro. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. In the spring of 2010, our Board of Ed was faced with the daunting task of working on a budget that included several cuts to teaching positions. At that meeting, a parent stood at the podium and pointedly asked the members to raise their hand if they had ever been in a Hillsboro classroom. Of the nine board members, only a few raised their hands. And when pressed further about the types of classroom experience, it was mostly to attend school events, such as performances, assemblies, or special class project. None of the members really knew what it was like to walk in the shoes of a teacher, not even for one day. Last year, the Hillsboro Education Association sponsored the Teacher for a Day program, providing an opportunity for community members to spend a day doing the job of a teacher. If the same pointed question were to be asked here tonight, three of you could proudly raise your hands, because you participated in the program last year. Mark Rosenberg, Twian Lee, and Judy Haas all accepted our invitation and spent a day in Hillsboro classrooms, experiencing what education is like in the 21st century.
This year, over 50 invitations were sent to the community to take part in this event. Nine of those invites were sent to the members of this board. Of those nine invitations, we only received one response back, "Thank you, Jennifer Haley." But it is with great disappointment that we report, as of right now, there will be no Board of Education members participating in this year's event. As co-chairs for this event, we acknowledge that you volunteer to be a member of the board, and we thank you for your time and commitment to our students. Providing the children of Hillsboro with an excellent education is our shared goal. So we ask ourselves, how can one knowingly make decisions about the education of our children without being in the classrooms? Everyone believes they know what is right for education, and are somewhat of an expert because they once were a student. We are here to report the classrooms of today are completely different from not only the days when all of us attended school, but even as recently as five years ago. We would even make the argument for a different Hillsboro classroom as recently as one year ago, due to the technology that was brought into our classrooms, technology that was approved by this board. When making the decisions for what is best for our children, we ask you to consider spending some quality time in our schools. We recognize you may have jobs and other commitments, and it may not be possible to participate in Teacher for a Day on February 24. We are here tonight to ask you to reconsider our invitation. We haven't heard back from most of you, and there is still time for you to choose to participate. We are willing to work with you and your schedule. Those who participated last year found it eye-opening, and we are sure you would walk away with a much better understanding of how our schools function. We believe this type of experience will be invaluable when making decisions about what is good for our children, the children who will someday be making decisions for our world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is James Prosky from 67 Longfield Drive, and I am the secretary for my robotics team, Team 75. I'm here today to give you updates on our current build season. Right now, our animation sub-team has completed its storyboard and has begun animating and rendering its animation. Our design team has finished the robot design, and our fabricator has now begun fabrication for us. Our mechanical sub-team has begun assembly, has begun our assembly process right now, and hopefully will be finishing in the upcoming weeks. Strategy is right now finishing the rulebook for our game Rebound Rumble, and is also running our human player and backup driver tryouts for this year's game. Electrical is right now wiring the new robot that mechanical is assembling. Programming is right now working on a trajectory program to accurately shoot the hoops. And all these sub-teams have until February 21, before we begin to set out for competition. Right now, our fundraising sub-team has come up with two fundraisers that are going to happen in this month. The iHub fundraiser, which is on February 20, and the Five Guys fundraiser on February 28. During the first week of March, our team sponsors Technology Innovation Week, which is during March, the first week of March. On March 6, 7, and 8, our team is planning on providing STEM activities for the six districts at each of the elementary schools. On March 8, we will be hosting a science fair at the municipal building, and this will be co-hosting with the Hillsboro Public Library Services, and it's for grades 5 through 8. And then also, on March 23, we will be participating in the Amsterdam Science Fair and doing a demo of our robot. On February 16, we have many submission dates for our team to reach. Our chairman's essay, which basically shows our outreach program and how we're trying to support STEM fields in our community. Woody Flowers, which is for, which we nominate an upstanding mentor from our team that's really helped us. Dean's List, which is two students who go beyond the goals required of their activities as a member. Our design, where we send the design of our robots to Autodesk, sponsored by Johnson &amp; Johnson. And our animation, which will be sent in on February 16 as well. I would like to extend an invitation to everyone attending here today. If you have any questions, or would like to come to see our warehouse, please contact me at jimmy.prosky@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good luck on your season.
Thank you.
Any other new business from the public? All right, seeing none. Is there new business from the board? Mrs. Lay?
I meant to do this in committee report, because it's just a legislative update.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Okay. So, since we met at the last board meeting, there have been a couple of things. First of all, our state, did anyone talk about that? That our state has a waiver for No Child Left Behind? I don't want to repeat if someone already brought that up. Okay. So we're one of 10 states, and there are a whole slew of states who are asking for review to be waived. And what that means is that, as, we will have to come up with our own progress indicators so that we don't have to follow NCLB. So that's, I think that's a positive sign for our state. And what, how that impacts Hillsboro is, for example, teacher evaluations. And most recently, let me just, so Commissioner Cerf issued a memo on teacher evaluations. And what, if I can just say that, I think that in a district like ours, we have such a good, solid school district, that we don't really have to worry about measuring up against other school districts. For example, the 10 pilot districts that have, are under the state evaluation system, they're in underperforming districts. I mean, there's, there's a mix, but it's, it's not, they, we don't have enough data from that. And so, rather than go forward with the state evaluation process, they're going to bring in another 30 schools to pilot it. And for the remaining 500 or so districts, all we have to do is to have researched it. And our school district is ahead of the game, because our strategic plan already has in, I think it's in the human resources category, our first goal is to have a teacher evaluation program that we believe is better. So, so in a nutshell, because we're such a good district, we can have, we can make choices that we think are best suited for our district. And I, and I, from going to Teacher for a Day and all the years of volunteering, I'm sure that any parents that go into our schools know how good our teachers are. And so, and I also want to point out that when we talk about just teacher evaluations, that's not the whole picture of what makes a student do well in a school system. It's this, how engaged the student is, it's how, how supportive the parents are, how supportive the community is, and how well-run our schools are. So, I'd like to remind everybody that there's more factors involved. And if we, and if we, as a board, think about our responsibilities, to, to think of curriculum that engages students, or to bring the right skill sets to these students so that they can go out into the workforce in the future, and be competitive on a, on a global scale, that's what we can contribute as a board. Oh, I'm getting carried away here. So then, the second legislative update is that the only bill that might be going through is the Teacher NJ Tenure Reform Bill. And that one, it, originally, it had stripped the superintendents and boards from less influence in the school district, but now they have amended it. But there's still a lot of responsibility at the principal level. Am I getting it right?
Yes.
All right, so that's the one that we're looking, we're following for our district. That's it.
Thank you. Any other new business? Dr. Rosenberg?
Just like to say to the, with regard to Teacher for a Day, a couple of things. First of all, I apologize. I didn't, I have just looked at my email, I never got it. I don't know why, but I never got it. Had I gotten it, I would have certainly decided to attend. Unfortunately, this year, I will be away on business, and I can't. But I would like to say, it was a wonderful experience last year. Anybody who has a thought that teachers don't work their butts off in class, before class, or after class, should try it. It was just an amazing, incredible experience. I encourage everybody who can to look into it, and I wish I could do it again, I truly do. But I'm sorry I didn't get the email, I would have, I would have told you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gillett?
Thank you, Dr. Padgett. I just wanted to say that I have never done Teacher for a Day. I hope to do it someday. But just as a matter of course, I would like to tell Mrs. Salinger that I never raised my hand when asked those questions from the audience, because I think that pits board members against each other, and it's distasteful to me. So, I've been asked questions where my hand should have been up, but I never raised it for that. And I think there may be some other board members also, that just do not raise their hands for those questions.
All right, I understand. Any other new business? All right.
I have something, if I could. I'm pleased to announce that the Hillsboro High School Wind Ensemble has once again been selected to perform as one of six outstanding high school bands at the 2012 Mid-Atlantic Wind Band Festival at Rutgers University this coming Friday night. The Wind Ensemble was chosen to perform as a result of their outstanding application and recording that was submitted to Mason Gross School of the Arts at Rutgers. The applications were evaluated by an independent panel of adjudicators led by John Whitwell from the Midwest Band Clinic Board of Directors. Congratulations to the Wind Ensemble, our teachers and parents, for their roles in continuing this tradition of excellence. Let's give them a hand. Speaking of excellence, I'd like to recognize our teachers for the year for each of our schools. There are celebrations that are going on throughout the district, and continue to, as we recognize each of these outstanding teachers. First, from Amsterdam School, Liz Browning, who's a writing teacher. From Autton Road, Susan Herndon, reading specialist. Hillsboro Elementary is Kate Marr, special ed in our LLD class. At the Middle School, Robert McGill, science teacher in 8th grade. Sunny Mead School, Lisa Fraal, who's our transitional primary teacher there. At Triangle, Renee Mayers, who teaches 3rd grade. At Woodfern, Victoria Fryman, who's a teacher in 2nd grade. At Woods Road School, Alyssa Green, she teaches 4th grade. And at our high school, the woman who is the High School Teacher of the Year is also our District Teacher of the Year, Cynthia Sabrera, who teaches world language. Let's give a big round of applause to all of our teachers of the year. Thank you, Mr. Prosky.
Thank you very much. I think that concludes new business. Mrs. Lay has one more?
Speaking of accomplishments, the robotics Lego, it's, is that called the Lego League? They were invited to Liberty Science Center to demonstrate their robot this coming Monday. So that's a great thing for parents to do. If you, if, since you're off, you can go to Liberty Science Center with your kids, and also support and, and show the, your children what they can do. So the, it's one Autton Road school student and four middle school students who are going to demonstrate their robot there.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we are at the public input on the 2012-2013 budget. We will be doing this all the way into April. Please come out and give us input on how you feel about the school budget. You can say positive things, you can say negative things, and we will try to listen and respond in our budget discussions. All right, seeing no input from the public. All right, we're going to move on to the action agenda. If there's any comments from the public at this time regarding the action agenda, you can do so at this time. And I'll let the board comment during the action agenda.
Dana Blevins, First Vice President of the Hillsboro Education Association. I'd like to speak on the Action Agenda Item C2, the resolution about moving the school, the annual budget election to November, and not voting on a budget at cap. This board has always done an incredible job, in my opinion, of being fiscally responsible and creating a budget that takes care of the needs of our community and our students, while also keeping in mind the taxpayer burden. And you should be commended for that, along with the administration, who works tirelessly on the budget every year. I'm just up here to ask that you seriously consider when you're voting tonight on that Action Agenda item, and that you approve this resolution, because it is the fiscally responsible thing to do. There is no need for a taxpayer burden additional for an election that we can move to November, and it be taken care of federally. And also, you guys are elected officials, and the way democracy works is the elected officials make the decisions, and once those decisions are made, if people don't like them, that's what elections are for, to change the positions. And that's exactly what this law did, and this, this change that allows you to do that. And I know that, I think I'm correct in saying, that in Somerset County, all but our school and two others have already decided to do the fiscally responsible thing, and move their elections to November. So I am greatly urging you to approve that resolution when it comes up on the action agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input from the public regarding the action agenda? All right, seeing none. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration to, for the following agenda items, under the area of education, to approve the professional and travel-related expenses, to approve the HIB investigation list, approve overnight trips, as well as, thank you, as well as the, the CUSAC Statement of Assurance, and the District Performance Reviews, the DPRs. The motion to approve the following field trips is listed, approve out-of-district placements. A7 needs to be modified, rather than what is listed here. You can see that there, there's an error there.
It's a nonsensical number.
Yeah, the decimal, decimals is in the wrong place. It should read $48,929.
It should read $48,929.40. Mr. Mahmoud, would you change that within the agenda in the minutes?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Also, motion to accept the fiscal year 2012 IDEA grant, the calendar for the 12-13 school year, the memorandum of understanding between NJ DOE and the Hillsborough Public School Systems for establishing a framework of collaboration and support of the state Race to the Top grant. And that's all that we have for education.
Mrs. Haas, would you like to make that motion?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on those items? Uh, Dr. Rosenberg?
I'd like to separate out A9.
Anything else?
On the, on the out-of-district, on the out-of-district placements, these were just, these, these weren't due to any sort of settlements or anything, did I, did I forget? These were just recommendations by our staff? Okay.
Mrs. Haas?
Unfortunately, we're not gonna get to discuss Race to the Top until Thursday at our education committee meeting, but this application is due to, on Wednesday. I was just wondering how the administration feels about getting $14,000 and a whole bunch of additional requirements on us, and whether or not $14,000 is worth the kinds of things that we're going to have to agree to, to obtain this grant.
Actually, the grant is not due tomorrow. Just the memorandum of understanding, which would allow, that we can still back out if we decide we don't wanna do this. The reason why the state needs to know whether districts who are entitled to this money would like, are eligible for the money, would like to receive it, is for those who don't want to take the money, by Wednesday, we should know exactly how much money we would get for all the districts that decide not to go for it. So it may be more than the $14,000, but yes, it will be a, a large amount of work for that amount of money. Um, I'm trying to get clarification on exactly what the money can be utilized for, because there are such restrictions with Title I funding. And I haven't had that answer yet come to me. So hopefully by Thursday, by the education committee meeting, I'll have more information for everybody.
Right. When is the update?
Uh, if we don't submit the application, the actual application, I believe it's March 14th, if we don't submit it, then we don't submit it, we're not in the running, we don't have to do that. So this MOU, all it says is that we've been intent to participate. We can decide not to.
Okay.
Uh, Mrs. Lay?
Can you separate out A2? I, I was there the whole time.
Okay. All right, I, I just, in terms of the Race to the Top grant, I know that when it comes down to our level, we don't get that much money and we get sort of requirements that are, you know, probably more than the money's worth. But my understanding is the state gets a big chunk of change, which they can invest in technology and computers and data analysis and things like that, which I, I think is probably valuable, valuable going forward with the state, uh, in terms of analyzing student test scores and, and doing things like that. So, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if it really is worthwhile, the $14,000, but the, the money that comes with the grant for the state is probably worthwhile, in my opinion.
That, that was the case last time, that the state was gonna take something like 50 to 70% off the top of Race to the Top and presumably provide support to school districts. But at the same time, this particular application requires us to do a lot of computerized work that we don't have the capacity for now. It, it requires all that growth data on students that we're working towards, but we're not there yet. It requires various other things that I was just concerned are gonna cost a lot more than as much money as we're possibly going to get. And, you know, that doesn't mean not to sign it, doesn't mean really very much at all. But, uh, you know, once again, unfunded mandate, um, you know. I, I don't wanna do 10 times as much stuff that we're getting the money for.
And these, and these are additional requirements that are being imposed by the federal government onto a local educational entity.
It's not unfunded, it's just slightly funded.
I, I'd like to separate out A10 as well.
Anything else in here? All right, so... I gotta write it down. A2, A9, and A10. So we're going to start by voting on everything not A2, A9, and A10. All right? Is that cleared for everyone? All right, roll call, Mr. Mahmoud?
Mr. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Padgett?
Yes. And moving on, let's go with A2. I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion on that one? All right, no. Okay, uh, roll call, Mr. Mahmoud.
Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Abstain.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Abstain.
Mr. Padgett?
Yes. All right, and now moving on to A9. I need, I need a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
God.
Dr. Rosenberg?
Wasn't here last time. I did watch the video about the discussion of the calendar, and I recognize how difficult this has been. I cannot support the calendar the way it is. Two snow days is a very dangerous thing. To tell the public that if we have a bad winter, we're going to take days away from spring break after the few other options are exhausted, is a very risky move. And it didn't have to be. I do not understand, I wasn't here, I've asked, I do not understand, well, actually I do, why we had to fix the graduation date of June 20th. Last year, and the year before, and the year before that, the graduation dates were all later. I understand that Project Graduation had to make a deal with Dave and Buster's. Dave and Buster's is not a reason to put the calendar in such jeopardy. I also understand that it gets hot in the classrooms, and if the extra snow days, or you could call them snow and excessive heat days, if you want, were not used, we could alleviate some of those hot days in June if they, we still had them left. We could have graduated on the 21st, on a Friday. We could have graduated on a weekend, which would've been easier for many families to attend. We could have graduated on the following Monday, and given ourselves the flexibility that we need to avoid what could be a very bad situation if we have a, a bad winter. The number of, when you start taking away spring break days, the number of parents that will fill this room, uh, there will not be enough chairs. But there'll be plenty of chairs in school when all the kids don't show up. This didn't have to happen. If Dave and Buster's is so important that we have to do this to the community and put this community at risk, I mean, maybe we'll have a winter like this, who knows? Uh, I, I, I just think those are the wrong priorities. There are plenty of other places I think Project Graduation could have gone to for their event. I should point out that in the past, the senior class has not been able to book its first choice for graduation. We didn't move the graduation date, they found other alternatives. So for us to put the entire year in jeopardy so that, and, and I, I'm a big supporter of Project Graduation, I, I went and chaperoned Project Graduation, I understand its value. But to do this because they can't get Dave and Buster's on another day, to me, is just the wrong decision.
Uh, Mr. Gillette?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say I appreciate Dr. Rosenberg's comments very much. But, Dr., you did, you watched the meeting, and it occurs to me now, thinking about, back to the meeting, we spoke a long time about the calendar. And no one, no board member present made any suggestion to move the graduation date. We didn't have that, that discussion never came up. It, it never once came up. I, so I gathered from that, that that was something that board members were comfortable with, the June 20th graduation date. It only came up at the very end, when we were deciding to postpone the vote, then Mrs. Haas made a request, can we at least, I think that's how it went, can we at least set the graduation date, or something to that effect?
It was actually your idea.
It was, yeah, well, I, well, after, after, you made it, you had a concern, I think, about the graduation date, and I, I guess I made the request, let's set the grad, let's set the date. But the whole time, we didn't, we never had that discussion. So I think that, I think that, to me, that just tells me that it was not something that we considered, because it was, we were very happy with that June 20th date. That, that's, I'm, I'm saying this as, as a way of explanation, because I think you have good comments, Mark, but I, I just think that, that just didn't come up for us, because we were happy with the June 20th date, and we were gonna, you know, it's a variable that we didn't wanna move.
I, I think, to clarify, I think that it wasn't the, uh, choice by the Project Graduation made us choose that date. It was more like we wanted to set the date, and, and we weren't really considering that. We were looking at the days in between the beginning of the school and end of school on how to move them around, and that we just wanted to be able to set that end date so that the Project Graduation could move forward with what they wanted to do. They, I don't think they cared what date it was, they just wanted to have a date. So we set a date, and then we figured we're doing the other things, moving the other things around. I think that's how it went. All right? Any further, uh, Dr. Rosenberg?
I would, then I would suggest, if you're waiting, if, if, if Project Graduation can set any date, then why did we have to set the graduation date? Why did we have to put the district at risk in the first place? I, I, it just seems ludicrous to me. It could have been, the graduation could have been a later date. If there was no scheduling problem with Project Graduation, as apparently there wasn't, why couldn't we have moved the graduation date and given us the flexibility we need to accommodate the snow days, should we have them? This is an unusual year for, in terms of days, and it called for, I think, a little more flexibility. Now, uh, to be fair, I, you had the discussion last week, I watched it, I wasn't here, I, that's the way it is. But I am simply voicing my opinion and suggesting that if we have a bad winter, we may regret the date we've set for graduation.
Can I just say something?
Mrs. Haley's next.
Okay.
That's, okay.
I just wanna say thank you, 'cause it appears that we will be open on prom day with the calendar. We're not having a half-day or closure. So I appreciate that, because I think that, at least in my opinion...
If you really wanna talk about that.
And according to correspondence as well, you know, people were very upset that the district was closed on prom day. So we are alerting all of the senior girls to start booking their appointments now, 'cause they have a full year to do so. But I think that educationally, that was the right move for us to do that. It affects such a small percentage of the population that that was the right move for us. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Gillette?
Just, just to go back to the end of the school day, um, and I think this is appropriate to, if we wanna have a five-minute discussion on this, it's okay, 'cause we haven't voted on the calendar yet. And, um, this is, sort of, this is a new issue, because we didn't, like I said, we didn't discuss it at all. But, you know, for all the years that I've been on the board now, we've always had a certain parameter where we have graduation Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. We never can have it Monday, because we're not gonna bring people back from a weekend to have it on Monday. We never have it Friday, because it may go too late, or for some reason that, maybe it's unclear now, but I, that, because we, if we started at 6:00 PM or whatever it is, it may go till sundown, or some other, some other... Now, hey, we could have graduation at 4:00 PM on Friday, but no one's ever suggested that. Um, you know, so, so when, 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 when the board members, especially the ones that have been on the board for a long time, like Chris and, and Judy, and myself, when we're, when we're here three weeks ago, and we're looking at this, we're thinking, okay, Thursday, or all the way to the next Tuesday. And we're saying, no, let's, let's stop it here on Thursday, the 20th. We're stopping it right here, and we'll sort out the other days, back to education committee to sort out. I think, I think that's, that's the way it went.
I think that's a good summary. All right, any further discussion?
Move the question.
Uh, well, I think we're ready to go anyway. A roll call, Mr. Mahmoud? On A9, the calendar.
Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
No.
Mr. Padgett?
Yes. All right, moving on to A10. Um, the memorandum of agreement, I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Any further discussion? I, I would put forward that, um, I, I, I understand the worries about this, but we, we are not at the sort of drop-dead date. We can say that we're interested, and at the end, do the analysis, and then pull back. So, uh, I'm just thinking about it that way. So, all right, roll call, Mr. Mahmoud?
Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
She stepped out.
Mr. Kins?
No.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Padgett?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend that the board consider the following motions under the human resources part of the agenda, including the approvals of resignations and retirements. We have many as listed, including Deborah Filippone, who's been working here as an instructional assistant at HES since 1994. Teresa Messinger, who's also an instructional assistant at the high school, who's been with us since 1987. Retirement of, of Ann Ovath, who's been with us since 1984. Claudia Slappy, a third-grade teacher over at Sunnymead, who has worked with us since 1980. Donna Wagner, a lunch aide from the Hillsborough Elementary School, who has worked with us through 1988. We thank all of them for their many, many years of service. Also, to approve the retire, revised retirement is listed, to approve the, the leaves of absence also is listed, as well as the revised leaves of absence, the revised long-term substitutes and contract changes. We have one rescinded contract, and we have approval of transfers and change in appointments, as well as the approval of an interim vice principal at our middle school. Long-term subs is listed, an instructional assistant, clerical assistant coach, co-curricular advisor, mentors, student teachers, and substitutes is listed, as well as the group changes on attachment B10.
All right, Mr. Pulsifer?
Uh, on behalf of the Human Resources Committee, so moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call, Mr. Mahmoud?
Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Under the area of operations, I ask for your consideration for the following motions, to approve Line Island transfers, to approve movement of the school board and, uh, school board election to November, as detailed in the resolution, to award contracts for re-roofing projects at the middle school and Woods Road School, to approve our district as a member of the American Red Cross Shelter, and to accept the donation of a wall map for Amsterdam School.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Mrs. Haley?
Um, can we separate out C2, please?
Yes, I'm not surprised. All right, anything else? All right, seeing no further discussion, we're gonna vote on everything but C2. All right, roll call, Mr. Mahmoud?
Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Padgett?
Yes. All right, I need a motion for C2.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion, Mrs. Haley?
You know, this is obviously something that is in the news, and there's many people that I've heard feedback from, on both sides of the fence, but while I understand the boards of education throughout the state are really jumping on the bandwagon and moving the elections, I don't understand why we can't sit back for a year, and wait to see how the implementation process happens in other districts. You know, NJASBA issued the guidelines, and with regards to the budget, and how we're gonna handle the elections, and candidates have to, you know, apply at a later date now, and there's just a lot of restrictions. Things look nice and neat on paper, but when you try to implement the plan, it doesn't always happen the way that it's intended. So, I also still have an issue with not allowing the voters to vote on the budget. So, what I would like to see is an amendment, and if we're gonna say 2% cap, that means hard 2% cap. Right now, there's restriction, there's exceptions that are allowed, pension, healthcare premium, so I think what disenfranchises voters is, you know, they don't quite understand what 2% means. 2% doesn't really mean 2%. So, I don't understand why we can't be trendsetters and say, we'll stick to a hard 2% cap.
Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, actually, the legislation itself doesn't say anything about a 2% cap, it just says about a cap, and then the state sets the cap. And one of my fears of this legislation is that school districts, and a whole bunch of them did jump on the bandwagon, could agree to this legislation, and then the cap could be turned to zero. And the cap could have no exceptions, and we could have 150 more kids in the schools, and we could have one of our aging buildings fall apart, and we could have all sorts of contingencies. So, as far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't agree to anything on the basis of no amount of cap described in the legislation. And I would also suggest, as I did last time, that this is going to be the worst general election of recent memory. We have candidates running at every single level. I do not think that this would be the best year to start having school board elections in November. And it would be very difficult, when you have an 80% voter turnout at the polls in a presidential election, to have a new section of the ballot that people don't understand, nor could I begin to imagine what the signs around town are gonna look like, with a president, a congressman, an assemblyman, a group of township committee people, and a bunch of Board of Ed people running for office at the same time. So, not looking forward to that visual clutter. Not to mention the fact that I agree very much with Jen, that I think this is an option for us to sit back and see how other people do, whether they regret it a year from now or not. And the other thing that people need to know, is that if you make this move, and move the elections to November, you cannot undo it for four years. So if something goes egregiously wrong, four years. If something goes egregiously wrong, you're stuck. Whereas, if we decide this year not to move ahead in a precipitous manner, without due discussion, public input, we could do this at any time, the year after, or the year after that, or the year after that. And as you all know, I love to collect data. A little minor piece of data that I collected was the Hillsborough turnout in last year's November election, which was 25%. That was in November, when we had no less than three Hillsborough residents on the ballot. So if that is the great turnout that people expect in November, I dare say, we've actually come close. We've had a school board election with 22% turnout. So, very different in presidential years, gubernatorial years, and what they call off years of congressional and assembly races, but last year was 25%. So, I don't see the grand guarantee of additional turnout, not to mention with 80% of people voting in a presidential election, which is also a congressional election, you know, assembly, township committee and all that, leaves very little time to discuss school board issues and get any kind of attention for them. So, I would think that those are a number of reasons to hold off for another year, if not forever. Not to mention giving people the right to come up and talk to us about the budget once a year. That's it.
They can still talk to us about the budget, absolutely. They just can't, they wouldn't, they would still be able to talk to us about the budget, they just wouldn't be able to...
I don't see anybody coming up, and it's February.
So maybe if you took away their vote, maybe they'd come up, never mind.
Mr. Pulsofer? It looks like I may be on the short side of this issue, but in my view, this is a long time coming, and it's about time. I, I have never understood what was special about the school board budget, that mandated that we ought to have public vote, when we don't, as, as members of the public, we don't vote on any other budget, our township, our county, our state, our country, all of which impact our taxes.
Fire budget.
Well, I wasn't gonna go through the entire laundry list, but the things that make the biggest hits, you know? I don't get to vote on the federal budget, but I sure get to pay income taxes. You know, I don't get to vote on the state budget, but I pay income taxes. The way our system works, as, as Mr. Blevins so accurately pointed out, is a democracy. You, you elect people to represent you, and you have those people go make a decision, because they have the opportunity and the access to information, to make what is, at least we hope, the best decision. And I don't know why the school board budget should be any different than every, every other governmental budget that, that impacts our taxes. If people don't like what people do at the state level, at the federal level, at the town level, when time comes up to vote for them, they don't vote for that person. I don't see what about our budget makes it different from all those other scenarios. So I think, you know, there's no reason to do that. The other thing is, you know, we're incurring, because the other districts, and it's not our fault, but the other districts that are in Somerset County, that have chosen to move, our cost of holding elections is going to go up, is what I understand, because there are few elections, and there's still a cost to be covered, so we're gonna have to cover more of that. I just don't see anything about this, you know, the, this idea of, you know, protecting the public vote. The other thing I would say is, last year's vote, I believe, at the school board, was 15%, and that was a good year. Yes, we did get 22 once, when it was a very hot issue. But the reality is, we have, what can best in the, in the measurement of democracy, is in my view, a pathetic turnout, when it comes to school board elections. When we can get, when, you know, we're happy to get 15%, that doesn't say a lot about whether or not the public even thinks that they should be voting on it. Certainly not enough to the extent that they show up to vote on what is, I keep hearing is such an important thing to the public. If it's that important, why aren't people showing up? It's because I think people believe in the democratic system that applies to everything else that we do. You elect the representation, and let the representation have access to the information, and spend the time, and the due diligence, and do their best job to do it. So I think that's where we should be, at the same point as all the other government bodies.
Dr. Rosenberg?
This is a tough one, because it, it is, in, in many ways, unfair that the, that all of the frustrations that taxpayers may have about, about taxes, get taken out on the schools. I can imagine what, what we'd find, what would come out, if the township budget was voted on, if the county budget was voted on. In some respects, this makes the schools much more accountable, and much more transparent, than the township or the county. I think the township should thank its lucky stars, voters don't have an opportunity to vote on that budget. So it, it is unfair, it is unfair. And I think that elected officials are accountable for their budgets, and so I think Mr. Pulsofer is right on that. However, Mrs. Haas makes a very good point. One of the things that I, I believe in, is that election of the right candidates to the school board is more important than any singular budget. And I fear a politicization of this body, should the election move to November. We're supposed to be non-political, we're supposed to be non-aligned, and I don't know how we could continue that in November. With all the noise that will go on around other elections, with all the signs, and all the joint campaigns, and everything else, whether we try to or not, we'll get sucked into it. And I think that would be extremely unfortunate. I also think the space in the newspaper for educational issues to be debated, or in the patch, or anyplace else, would be reduced. I think there would be less opportunity for debate, not that there's a lot now. I, I just don't think the public could keep its eye on the education ball, even if it's 25% of them, if it's, if it's moved to November. I think the public is better served, when the issues about the schools are, are, are at a unique time, when they can be considered. It is unfortunate that the state took a cop-out in this law, by, by requiring you to move to November to keep the budget cap. My ideal would have been, keep the election where it is, and, and set up some criteria to get away from an annual vote on the budget, just vote on the candidates. But that's not the case, so if I have to balance the two, I'm gonna err on the side of a, a, a de-politicized election for school board, and to keep the school board as a unique, and the only thing going on at a certain time, so people can pay attention to it. I think that's more important. So I would be in favor of keeping it the way it is, and waiting a year.
Mrs. Haley?
I actually just have a follow-up, and I don't know if maybe Mr. Mahmud is a little bit more of an expert on Mr. Pulsofer's comment, that because we potentially won't move, that it's gonna cost us more for the election, I don't understand the justification in that.
That was in the paper, too.
Okay, then I missed that, I'm sorry.
Would you like to comment?
Are we talking about significant dollars?
We'd fight over smaller.
I think, Ms. Haley, based on, just a little synopsis, from what I understand, the, the county board of elections works based on all the revenue they receive from the different school districts, as far as the election is concerned. In this case, because not all the school districts are gonna participate in an April election, the cost of the elections for the, for that particular board of elections will go up. We don't have a definitive number yet, because we don't know which districts for sure are gonna elect to move this motion. However, an estimate that we got from the county clerk is about 50%, which is about $5,000 or $6,000 more than what we're paying currently for our election costs, we think. That's just a projection. We, we don't have solid numbers at that point. And that was given straight from the county clerk.
Mrs. Haas?
There's really genuinely no reason for that. I mean, the bottom line is, the election cost to us, or the cost of manning the polls, and the cost of machines. So if the county has less machines to deliver to various towns, and less poll workers to hire, I'm not quite sure why their administrative overhead needs to stay the same. So I really question, and frankly, you ought to write a letter to Somerset County, asking exactly why the cost of an election, where we have like five polling places, and a handful of machines, and a handful of staff, who get paid a ridiculous, like, $100 to $200 for a half a day? Why, why that would become $18,000? It's absurd.
I, I don't know about the dollar, but they do, the county does send out the sample ballots to those that are registered, you know, so if you're not printing in, in volume, there may be something there.
Please.
They pay for that.
You know, is it a double amount of $18,000?
They bill that back to us.
Go ahead. Hang on, hang on. Mr. Mahmud, please?
One thing, Ms. Haas, is, Mr. Ecker was at the NASBO meeting, when the county clerk was there, did mention that there's an advertising, large advertising cost, that costs thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, that would be split amongst the districts. That's one example. For our district, that's gonna go up a little bit, because not every district is gonna participate now in such an expense.
Let him take a smaller ad.
So, so the, what was the cost last year? Did we have a, a figure for that?
It was approximately $18,000.
So it cost us $18,000 last year, and then whatever, 50, 6,000 more, or 50% more, somewhere around there.
50% more is a part of it.
So, I, we have to go on what the experts tell us in some ways, but, so it would cost a little bit more. All right, any further discussion? Mr. Kent?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna vote against this. I don't support taking away the, the voters' ability to vote on the budget. I noticed the discongruity between the different levels of government, and instead of taking away the voters' ability to vote on this one, to make it equal, I'd like to see it go the other way. And as Dr. Rosenberg said, it does make us more accountable. I, I believe that, and with regard to that, I respect the, the wisdom, I respect and accept the wisdom of the individual voters, when they vote on the public budget.
Did you have something, or no?
Actually, I actually had a long...
Yeah, so I, I have a, I know I have a, my opinion is, is very unshaped, unfortunately, on this one. I've lived in, I don't know, four states, and this is the only one where you have to vote on your school budget, and the whim of, and the feeling of the townspeople, at times, can affect how your education system turns out, such that, you know, one school system is, is funding their schools, and, and you see them getting, you know, a, a, a better facilities, and, and things for their, their students, and then in another district, people are voting down budgets, and you're, and, and you can't keep up with, with costs, so things are being cut, so there's a, a bit of a disparity there. I understood that at, at a time when there was no cap on how much a school board could raise, that there would, there would be very little check in terms of, you know, you know, board goes crazy, and that the, the public can't control that. But, instead of, so the, the check was the vote at that time. But, in the meantime, the state came along, and they put 6% cap, and then a 4% cap, and now a 2% cap. And at the point where you have a 2% cap, and you get insurance increases that are double digits, and you have heating costs, or electrical costs that go up, at, at times, that you're barely keeping up with what you need to do, if, if you keep everything the same with a 2% increase. So, in some ways, if you are below that 2% cap, you're, you're doing pretty well, considering what, what the outside demands of the system are. But I also know that, that the people around here really like to vote on their budget. And I, I, I wish, and, unfortunately, the way I've seen the budgets, and the way our district rates in terms of administrative costs, and, and, and cost per pupil, and we do really, really well, I, I wish that the public could look at that more closely, and see that we're doing an extremely good job, that, that year to year, there should be no failed budgets, because the, the board does a good job of examining things, and controlling things, there's good debates, there's good feedback from the public about what, how they feel. But in the end, I, I don't know if I can, I can move the vote. You know, I, I like the idea of maybe holding it off, but, so, you know, like I said, I'm a little wishy-washy on this one. But, any other comments, Mrs. Lay?
Yeah, just a quick one. I'm all for being a trailblazer, if it's about, about having better teacher evaluations in the state, or about making our curriculum stronger. In this case, I don't see the advantage of moving it during a presidential election year, like you said, and I, even though it's very hard for board members, we really appreciate the input from the public, not just at budget time, but throughout the year. And if we were to move this election in a future year, after we see what the other districts have to go through, I would like to see that level of public debate, for the budget, and for other issues, so that we can say that that's not a reason for, for us to be discouraged to move. Okay, so that's...
All right, seeing no further discussion, I think we're ready to move on to our roll call, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
No.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Kent?
No.
Mrs. Lay?
No.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
No.
And Mr. Page?
Oh, no. Sorry, I was counting instead of listening.
That's all we have for the agenda. The information items are available for board review. review.
All right. We're moving on to old business. Is there's any old business from the public? We can address the board at this time. We may not address it right now. We may refer to administration, or committee, or put on a future work agenda. But it may be addressed now. So any old business from the public? All right. Seeing none. Any old business from the board? Mr. Kintz?
Since we've, since the elections are gonna occur in April, the deadline for candidates who are interested in running are due February 27th.
February 27th, and you can get packets at the board office?
Yes.
And online?
Online.
And online at our website.
The more the merrier.
All right. Any other old business? All right. Mrs. Lay?
And even though it's hard around budget time to sit up here and listen to the input, we really value the work we do on the board, so, and we would like to see a diversity of opinions. That's why we have nine of us. So we encourage residents to consider being on the board. But my old business is, as I was, I follow the legislative updates for the board, and I was thinking of our process for, our upcoming process for improving, or to, for the teachers to work with each other. And there was this model of having an expert teacher, and as I thought about it some more, how can you do that in a system where the steps are so even? So in other words, there is no difference in pay scale. So what, how do we do that in this type of system?
As part of the, as you rightfully reported out, the No Child Left Behind waiver will move the agenda forward on a teacher evaluation system that's stratified into four different areas. Mr. Rocco has been going to other staff development opportunities, maybe he can talk a little bit about a few of the options that are available for New Jersey public schools?
There's four different observation models that the state is currently recommending school districts review. There's a Danielson model, a McCray model, a Strong model, and...
Marzano.
Marzano model. All of them have been in existence for a period of time. Strong is the most recent one on the block. What they look at is, they look at criteria of development from very basic or low-performing through an exemplary, and they all use different words for what category that you would fall into. And there are rating scales that are broken down based on standards and descriptors within those standards. Each one of them kind of tweaks one issue over another issue. There's indicators, some have 60 indicators, some have 20 indicators. It depends on what the district's looking for. Some have support through online ability to walk through the classroom and check one indicator, and go through and look at another indicator that gets fed into a system. And as everybody's reported, 50% of the evaluation right now, the way it's written up, is based on student performance. What student performance, and how that's going to be done, has yet to be identified by the state. How much of that will be standardized testing, from four to eight, still don't know. But as it's written right now, 50% of a teacher's evaluation will be based on some type of student growth model, to be determined.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Haas?
I'd just like to add, and thank you, Tuyan, for reminding me. Last week, there was a meeting of the Somerset County School Board Association that I attended up in Warren Township, and they were discussing, the major subject of the evening was salary guides and negotiations and things like that. And the question came up about how you were gonna implement merit pay into the current types of salary guides that every school district has. And the attorneys who were there, not only the private attorney who spoke, but the attorneys from the New Jersey School Board Association, the people who deal with that, were saying that it was going to be a very difficult problem. And, you know, they were indicating, in terms of construction of salary guides, how you have vertical steps and horizontal steps, and now you would be adding another factor to that, and that among the professionals in the field, there doesn't seem to be any kind of concept of how this might be fairly implemented. So, for whatever it's worth, that was the discussion at the County School Board Association meeting, which was very good, by the way. And I don't know, does everybody get invites to that? Okay, so this was a bit of a schlep, but they're always having very, very good educational programs for board members, and, you know, I found it very valuable to attend.
All right. I think at this point, we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose and abstentions? Thank you very much.